All right, I'm gonna call the school board meeting to order.
Evening, I'll call the budget committee to order.
We'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, pretty and just for all.
So I notice this roll call attendance, that for both sides, or?
Uh, I think, is that for both? It's for everyone, right?
Okay, fine.
Where the guests will go first. Okay, so Vanessa, we'll start off with you, your remote.
Yep, Vanessa Matias, I am home, sorry I can't be there tonight, but I should be by myself most of the night, I've frightened all the children, so I'll say.
Listening Christine Kuzminsky for prior engagement, and.
Cheryl Gannon?
Oh Cheryl, sorry.
Break out on them.
Annie Collier?
Jim McCarthy.
Right, Pete, would you like to start?
I'm here.
Roll call.
I don't think you need to do that, all of us are here. Do we have to do that?
Yeah, Phyllis said that we have to do a roll call.
Yeah, Phyllis said we did, so.
We're doing what Phyllis says, trust me.
Pete Broderick present?
Heather A, Maura Basha.
Jenny Mahoney.
Jim Baker.
Don Dutton.
Tom Ambrose Superintendent.
Memphis working its way down here.
Right.
Action on the budget committee minutes?
Um, action on the budget committee minutes, we sent some out earlier that were incorrect. Select the ones that I revised, the ones I generated, Annie then sent some out for you, and I don't think we had time for you for a vote at this time, so we want to.
Want to ask if people have had a chance?
Sorry, does anybody have a chance to read Annie's version of?
No, I've not.
I have not.
Okay.
Vanessa, have you had time to review Annie's minutes?
I haven't now, sorry.
So, motion to postpone voting on those?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay. Vanessa, you wanna vote on the postponement?
Yes, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Oh.
Our auxiliary member?
Yep.
All right, do we have an action on the school board minutes? All right, any discussion?
I just have one, there's a typo on the facilities comment, which is what I sent you that way, but it should have been, should have said November 3rd. Yep, thank you.
So, do we need to amend the motion to correct that?
Did you make the motion?
I did not.
Are you making the motion?
No, second.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend the minutes for the reflection of the change that Jim stated.
And I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all, we need to do roll call, do we need to do roll call votes since we're all here in person? Okay, all right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, unanimous, thank you. All right, I will start something around manifest documents. Tom, we do not have any nominations, we have nominations.
We do, I'm super excited. Well, I mean, always kinda super excited, but I mean, particularly super excited.
Small town.
Thanks, yeah, I know, caught myself there, that we have a special ed coordinator for BAKI, we desperately needed to fill this position, and we have had a number of interviews, and either we found someone and it didn't work out for a variety of reasons, but we're really happy to announce that we are nominating Emily McGowan for special ed coordinator at BAKI. We are nominating Elizabeth Brown as a school nurse at the high school, which has been a challenging position to fill. I'm really happy about that hire. Desiree Gallagher is a special education student counselor, and Mr. Zachary Parker is going to be our student assistance counselor at the high school. So these are some positions that have been very difficult to fill this year with the pandemic, and we are really happy to have these folks joining us.
Move to accept. All right, all in favor? Superintendent's report.
Oh, thanks, I'm going to forego a superintendent's report because I'm presenting the budget, and that really is my superintendent's report, thank you.
Okay, great, all right, we'll move on to committee reports, policy?
We met.
Excellence in student achievement?
The excellence in student achievement committee met on October 20th, in attendance, myself, Mr. Fitzpatrick and Ms. Dutton, Mr. Ambrose, Dr. Haynes, Ms. DeRozier, Ms. Levitt, Ms. Donell, Mr. Stack, Mr. Krasnowski, Mr. Malala, Mr. McCloskey, and Dr. Kennett. Dr. Haynes provided an update to the implementation of the new K through 6 envisioned math curriculum, which includes significant efforts to fill gaps from the previous curriculum. The search for a new 7 through 12 math curriculum is underway with a January target to begin piloting. Dr. Haynes reported that the NEASC district-wide accreditation work is progressing, and a steering committee will begin meeting. Mr. Ambrose reported that the strategic plan is also progressing, and a draft will be circulated for feedback from staff, community, and board members. He stressed that there will be ample opportunity for input before the final version is presented. Dr. Haynes presented about the administration's efforts to translate the current competency grades with respect to the board's goal to move to a numeric grading system that translates to a letter grade in Alma and on report cards, that was our board goal, one of the one goals that we adopted. Alma has functionality to support this, and Dr. Haynes presented a report card template which summarizes subject grades on an A through F letter grade scale, and also provides the competency grades for each subject. Ms. Dutton believes that providing students with a better understanding of their grades will give them a clearer pathway and motivation to improve. Mr. Fitzpatrick stressed the importance of being able to quantify the final grade, and believes it should promote better engagement with parents. The high school administration reported on changes under consideration for next year to the schedule and program of studies with the transition to a six-period day to expand class time for core classes like math and ELA, that's English Language Arts. They're reviewing options and feedback, and will have more to report at a future meeting. I asked how band and choir will be scheduled. Mr. Stack stressed his commitment to those programs, and he is reviewing scheduling options, those are near and dear to many of us, I'm sure. Let's see, our next meeting is December 15th, December 15th, no, that's not right, is that right? No. It's two weeks from today.
November 18th.
Sorry, I have all this like in weird places, November 18th at 4:30.
Facilities has not met since our.
Finance.
Yeah, the finance committee meeting was held on October 20th. The minutes from 9:15 were approved, business administrator comments focused on increasing costs that we're seeing from inflation, particularly energy costs continue to rise, and Mr. Angel is looking at a about a 5% increase that he's gonna have to incorporate into the FY '23 budget for energy. He also expects to see an increase in healthcare costs in the coming year. He pointed out he had an operating cash balance of 7.2 million as of the end of September. This is more cash and is immediately needing adjustment as to the timing of the request for money towns to not put them in a cash crunch when we don't need the cash immediately. There was a budget adjustment request on heating oil, so taking money from the healthcare account, moving it to heating oil accounts for each of the schools in a total of $38,168.75, I didn't mention that at the last school board meeting. Mr. Angel will be presenting November transfer funds to cover additional costs for electricity and utility at the seminary, which was originally planned for to be over by September. The board had provided an extension December 31st for an agreement of $5,000. Mr. Angel is gonna provide the request for the next meeting. Mr. Angel informed that the USDA grant of $18,000 will be presented to the school board. Elevator access control was discussed, he had one quote in hand, and that would be moving to the next facilities meeting. District resource sheet, we reviewed the list of subscriptions in software and cost by vendor across the board. Mr. Baker asked about the data on utilization that has been requested previously, Mr. Angel informed that they were still working on trying to provide that. There's a discussion on the ACH plan, Mr. Angel would like to convert vendor payments to ACH processing. I had requested the administration repair a training document to be signed by all accounting personnel to ensure that no banking check changes are made without a double verification of the vendor. And to make sure that everybody's aware and have confirmed that they understand that, so a policy would be written and a training program to come out of that before we'd switch over. Vendor manifest questions were reviewed in detail during the meeting. The trust fund balances, there was a discussion on the comparison on trust funds, excuse me, there's a discussion on the comparison of investment yields versus principal preservation, and it was a sense of the finance committee that principal preservation was the top priority as opposed to trying to chase you because dollars from the trust funds have to be available in case of emergency. You don't wanna have them invested in other instruments and then have the instruments take a hit when you need the money. So that was a sense of the committee. Uncompleted items will be covered in a later off-schedule meeting on the trust balances, there were some issues with the data sets, so we were not able to go through the different balances and expenditures and budgets. And open item list is still the COVID spending update, and then book purchases and open POs to read.
Public relations.
Public relations committee met earlier today, and I will give a report at the next meeting.
Personnel has not met since I gave a brief overview last week. SST?
SST has not, nothing to report. The seminary discussions is an older item, but I do wanna share something about it. So I just wanted to take a moment and mention a couple of things very briefly. One is that Mr. Chinberg has created some drawings that took quite a bit of time that he is now going to meet with the historic commission to review. And he is moving along very quickly toward closing at the end of December. So I've been waiting with bated breath, knowing that these drawings were almost ready, and we just received them last week, and he's starting to share them publicly. We're very excited, so the hope is that the historic commission will agree, and then the the town council and the process that needs to occur to move that forward through the town of Kingston will happen, and, and we'll be, we'll be, we'll be able to finish this up in the next couple of months. Eric did want me to say thank you for the patience, because he had some issues with the architect being backed up and getting the drawings ready, and it was important to have a visual to see the, to see what it will look like and not just talk about it, which I thought was really important for our community, to see what, what it would look like. So, the other thing that I wanted to mention is that I did just share with all of you a video of the last EISA meeting. It is super important for people to watch the EISA meetings, because it helps you to understand the academic changes that are going on in the district, and for those of us who are in the trenches working on that, we're kind of familiar with it, but we realize that we need to promote those videos and have people watch them. So you might wanna watch the last few, just to get caught up, but particularly this last meeting was very important, would you agree, Tammy? As the chair?
Definitely packed with a lot of good information.
Yeah, it was kind of a culmination of almost a year's worth of work, so I did just share the video link with everyone in the room. Thank you.
All right, and budget?
Budget committee met on October 28th, we met, we had follow-up answers to questions from the previous meeting from Matt Angel on past budgets that Matt prepared answers for, and it was brought up that there was a new RSA defining the member-at-large and the voting of the member-at-large position, that the member-at-large can vote if a seat becomes vacant. We're still looking for a recording secretary, and the next meeting is happening right now.
Thank you. All right, so now we move on to Jocelyn, student council.
So we have more stuff this week, because things are kinda starting to get into the swing of things. Last Friday, our juniors did a Halloween dance, there was hot dogs, hamburgers, a DJ and a spikeball tournament. For that, they had a bonfire, and welding made two large fire pits from an old pressure tank that Dan Doyle donated. So they're kinda all worked together to make that happen, which is very cool. During football, senior Dean King used, was able to score a touchdown, we were very proud of her and her accomplishments. There was posted on WMUR the clip of her scoring it. Our life skills programs greenhouse is up and running, and they're learning how to manage a greenhouse and start growing crops. This past Sunday, we had trigger canning, we went to all three towns, Fremont, Newton, and Kingston. And instead of asking for candy, we all asked for canned goods and things that we can donate to food pantry, and we got a good amount of stuff that we were able to donate to each of the towns. November 19th is a statewide student council meeting at Pinkerton, we have most of our student council members going to that, there is a limit, so we have a few people who cannot go. But we have most of the kids going to that, we haven't had a real meeting like that in a while. Next Friday, the 12th is kindness matters. So we're gonna have it be a jeans day for all teachers, so we're gonna try and raise a good amount of money for the jeans program that gives scholarships to seniors. Sports awards was last night, it was the end of the fall season, it went very smoothly, and it was just a lot to be able to be back in the building and have sports awards like normal. Drama has a play coming up in a few weeks, they're doing Clue. Last Thursday, math team had their first match, and they placed third as a team. That's it.
Great, thank you. All right, we now have first public comments. They're all jumping up. All right.
All right, great. Phyllis, do you have paper and pencils for people, just in case they wanna write anything down? So. I wanna make sure that Vanessa can see too, Vanessa, can you see?
I'll let you know when it comes up. I was worried about that being home, that I wouldn't be able to see the slides very well, I should have asked you for them ahead of time.
I'm sorry, Vanessa, are you, are you able to see, Vanessa?
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, I said I'll have to wait till the slides come up, I should have had the time if I could have the presentation, because it is hard to see from home.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, Matt, can you, Vanessa can't see it, so can you share with Vanessa? Okay, here we go, this is not gonna take long, and we will give you a paper copy after. Vanessa, we'll send one home with someone to you, or we'll get one to you, a paper copy?
Okay, thank you.
Here we go. Welcome, thank you very much, this is the fifth time that I've presented a budget to the Sandborne Regional School District, and for the first time, it doesn't feel completely nerve-wracking. Partly that's because I know that Pete is getting done this year. I'm just kidding. All right, so here we go. First of all, we wanna start with our core beliefs. We believe that the following four things are very important, and we have a lot of work to do on some of these things. The first one is that having an aligned curriculum is incredibly important. We recently purchased a new K through 6 math curriculum, and you'll see in the budget more information about aligning our reading and math curriculums from 7 to 12, and at our elementary schools. We believe that it's important to identify when students aren't doing well academically, that we do something about it, and help them. We believe in implementing the best practices in teaching. We know that the most important thing in a child's education is the quality of the teacher, and the skill of the teacher. We also believe that having a culture focused on student achievement for the whole child. That's a really fancy way of saying that it's not academic or social and emotional, it's academic and social and emotional. The whole picture matters for kids to be successful. So we review these core beliefs regularly as an administrative team, and we use them when we look at the budget. These are our anticipated enrollments and class sizes for 22 to 23. We have done the work of trying to keep our class sizes within our policy. We got a little bit close at Memorial with 20 to 21, and a little bit close in third grade, I'm sorry, second grade. But we were able to use the staff that we have and move them around and kinda get everything settled to keep things at a relatively reasonable level. Here are the proposed budget highlights. These are critical things that we have to have to move forward as an organization, they are included in the budget. We put in $90,000 for a 7 through 12th grade math program, per the the, the work of the school board last year, we adopted a K through 6 math program, and we are piloting a math program for 7 through 12 this year, so we anticipate the cost of the new program to be roughly $90,000. We, we have NEASC accreditation that we're doing, so we need to put that in the budget, and that is a requirement, it's not optional. There's athletic and student programs and special education van lease and rental. So essentially what that is about is that we have realized that it's incredibly expensive to rent coach buses and, and full buses to take teams of three or five kids to golf matches or other sports games that are really small groups of kids, so we'd like to rent a van, so that I, I like to say that, where's Mr. Dawson? Mr. Dawson's at a sports event, he's running over here shortly, but Mr. Dawson's been driving kids and renting a van here and there, we just wanna lease one so that we have it, but also so that coaches can use it, and some of our special education teachers can use it, it should save us at least, at least close to a, a match for the price of, of the lease, in terms of transportation. We did put in money for a reading program for Memorial, we would like to begin, we only know, a reading program K6, but we felt that the math program has been a pretty heavy lift for K3, and we feel like they need another year before they start the reading program, so we thought we'd start with 4, 5, 6, and then do K through 3 the following year. There are some special education-based IEP needs, the special education department needs a reading and writing specialist, and they need a special education paraprofessional, and they have $209,750 in student tuition rate increases. These are in the budget. The next slide is very important things that are necessary, but we could probably wait another year, if something happens, they move up, may move up to critical. Right, the first one is professional development, with the pandemic, we have lost our professional development funds to try to manage what we have to do to manage the pandemic. As we come out of the pandemic, which we are not out of the pandemic yet at the schools, the schools are still struggling to stay open and keep things moving forward. We are having difficulty with substitute coverage, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, lunch and cafeteria staff, teachers, we were thrilled to have those positions filled today, and it's November, that is very unusual. So I know that the, the world is kind of coming out of the pandemic, but the schools are still very much struggling with the reality of the pandemic day-to-day. I often call the schools to talk to a principal and find out that they're teaching, because there were no subs. That is very challenging, but we're doing it, we're open, and we're very proud of that, my wife's district had to close last week one of the schools due to COVID cases and lack of coverage, so we have not had to do that this year, and we are very thankful. So professional development will become more important as we ease out of the pandemic, but we felt like we could wait another year. The CIP plan has some issues that could become a problem quickly if they should deteriorate, and we didn't want to not, we wanted to mention them, because they're important issues that are going to need to be addressed in the near future. The first one is the Memorial bus drop-off roof and supports, they're just getting old and rusted. The, the track has been brought up to me every year for five years. The surface of the running track needs to be redone before it deteriorates, and I wanna stress this, because I was in a district previous to this that did not take this advice, and they waited until the track started to deteriorate, instead of just resurfacing it, they had to remove the track surface, and then rebuild it, it is way more expensive to do that than it is to spend $76,000 to resurface it. That could move very quickly from necessary to critical. The wireless upgrades district-wide, we have an aging wireless system in the district. The internet is an integral part of school in, in 2021. If the internet system goes down or fails, it will move from necessary to an emergency. The auditorium at the high school needs $128,000 in upgrades. I, I wanna stress, it needs $128,000 in upgrade, we're talking about lighting, sound systems, they're over, they're, they're very, very out of date. Literally, two years ago, Mr. Stack was trying to find a floppy disk to run the lights at the high school. And I'm not exaggerating, you remember, you know, she probably, you probably don't even know what that is. Like a little floppy disk with the thing inside, and, no, I'm pointing to Jocelyn, she, my son doesn't know what a CD is, my son looks at me like a, see what, huh? So floppy disks were way before CDs, and, and I couldn't believe that we were still using that, and, and we have made a couple of upgrades, but I just need everyone to know that, that it is inhibiting the auditorium, it's prohibiting the successful use of a wonderful facility. The condition of the screen, the lighting, and the sound system, it's a big problem. So those are some things that we felt you needed to be aware, could move from necessary to critical very quickly. Important, these are very important things that need to be discussed, everyone knows, I talked about the grade 3 to 6 transition a couple weeks ago. We continue to, to monitor the Biden administration's budget and the possibility of universal pre-K. This moves from important to critical if that legislation passes. If that legislation doesn't pass, it stays in the important to consider bucket, and the board will need to discuss that move in the future. The cost of $150,000 is moving fees, some furniture, and some walls that need to be put in at the high school facility if 6th grade were to be at the high school facility, it's not just the wall in the hallway, there are some classroom spaces that need to be divided. There is a couple of other small items in there too, I can't remember, but we'll, we'll cover those later if we have to have a conversation about whether or not to move. The greenhouse windows that are important, there, there are windows attached right up here on the roof to the, one of the science classrooms, it's kind of a greenhouse extension of that room. They're starting to get really weathered and wear, so we want you to be aware that eventually they're going to have to be replaced. We do need to talk about the phone system upgrades for BAKI Memorial in the SAU. Our phones are currently hardwired, and eventually we're going to wanna move to a more modern system of voice-over IP. We are looking at possible ways to upgrade the phones in the current year due to safety and operational efficiency, but if we can't find a way to do it with a cost savings or a cost neutral, it'll have to go into the budget eventually. Did I get that right, Matt? Okay. So the default budget. Per New Hampshire RSA 40139B, the default budget is calculated as follows. It's the same appropriation as contained in the operating budget authorized for the previous year, outlined in Slide 10. Reduced and increased by debt service contracts and other obligations previously incurred or mandated by law, outlined in Slide 11. This is reduced by one-time expenditures, and reduced by salaries and benefits of positions that have been eliminated in the proposed budget. The operating budget for this year was $36,019,26. That includes the professional staff collective bargaining agreement. That includes the professional staff collective bargaining agreement and the administrators collective bargaining agreement. The employment contracts. And related benefits professional and support staff equals seven hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and nine. The debt service for the high school and leased debt service is one thousand, five hundred and thirty-two. The transportation bus contract is twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one, we're, we're up for a new bus. Um, company proposal this year, so we added enough to make sure that we had some room to figure out what to do with that. The school food service expenditures, which are offset by food sales. Federal and state grant revenue is twenty-three thousand, seven hundred. And utilities is two hundred and forty-six thousand, sixty-four dollars. And insurance from Primex is twelve thousand, seventy-six dollars, so the total um, increase or calculation of the default budget is one million, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and twelve. For a total of thirty-seven million, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The comparison of the default and proposed operating. The, um, default budget, I, including instruction, support services and other financing uses in food service. Comes out to thirty-seven million, thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight. The proposed budget is a small increase above that, less than one percent at thirty-seven million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five. And that is primarily those things that were listed in the slide with the special ed needs. Um, the percent increase for the default budget is two point eight five. And the percent increase for the operating budget above the default budget is point eight seven. And I, I will hand out a copy of these slides in a minute, I just like people to listen to what I'm saying. And not be looking at the slides. Alright, so the estimated, estimated tax rate, local and state per one thousand of assessed value for Kingston is eighteen sixteen for the default and Newton is nineteen twenty-one. The impact of a home assessed at three hundred thousand dollars is five thousand, four hundred and forty-eight and five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three. The estimated tax rate local and state per one thousand of assessed value is eighteen thirty-six. And nineteen forty-four in Newton. And the estimated tax impact of a home assessed at three hundred thousand in Kingston is five thousand, five hundred and eight. And in Newton is five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two. Next steps. Um, you'll receive your, the budget book, if, if anyone would like a paper copy of the budget book, please just email Matt Angel, we've shared them digitally in the past, yes?
No, I'm just, I'm one of those.
Oh, yeah, okay, I was like, we're not doing questions, Mr. Fitzpatrick, even for you. Um, but the, uh, um, the budget committee, just email Matt and he'll get you a copy, a paper copy tomorrow. We're trying to save on paper, it's a lot of paper and a lot of people look at these digitally these days, but if you want a paper copy, we're happy to print one. Um, we're asking that the budget committee, please submit questions to the Budcom chair by November eighth. And school board, please submit questions to the business administrator by November twelfth. Um, is there a reason why those are two different dates, Mr. Angel?
Um, the November eighth one is a date that's specified in the budget committee's, um, calendar. Where they have, um, they have to have it to the chair. On that specific date and, and, um, we did communicate with Jim.
Okay.
Make sure that that's correct.
Okay. Oh, so you have a couple of days to look at them and do duplicates before Matt will get the other, okay, alright, okay. Uh, no, we'd like you to collate them because they do get duplicated for sure, thank you very much, he'll, he'll then look at yours and the board's and look for duplicates, but I, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to ask that you get them to us by the tenth, is that okay? It's next Wednesday? Is that okay? Yep, yep, Matt's gonna share the book with you in just a minute and we're gonna give you a printout of the slides. Okay, everyone okay for Wednesday, the tenth, we'll adjust the slide? Alright, so all questions will be answered at the joint meeting. On November eighteenth, we've done this process for five years, it works pretty smooth. Um, i- i- it is important to remember, a, a large portion of this budget is identical. To last year. Um, let me review the questions you asked last year by just clicking that link in the slides and we will share these slides with you digitally as well in a moment. Well, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, it's nice to see all of you and, uh, we look forward to having you review the questions and, and review the budget and give us your questions and we look forward to talking again in a couple of weeks, thank you.
Laughing at your auto response.
Matt's auto response?
It says the budgets do, which means I'm unable to respond to your email.
Vanessa, would you like us to mail you a hard copy home or are you good with the digital copy?
I am more than happy to just swing by the school and pick it up.
Sure.
Oh, quickie could have it available, but yeah, I would like it.
Yeah, would you like a hard copy of the budget book? Just email Matt and he'll get everything ready for you tomorrow.
Okay, perfect.
If you just want the slides, we can just have them at the central office tomorrow.
Um, okay, yeah, I mean, I'll just pick them at the same time, so I'll email Matt.
Okay, thanks.
The slides are in the budget book, by the way.
I'm good.
Alright.
I think the Budcom usually adjourns.
During Budcom, motion to adjourn the Budcom this time?
No. Yes. Um, I would like to ask if we could change our date for submitting our questions to November tenth as well. So make it the same as the school board.
Okay.
I make, do I need to make a motion on that?
That's gonna back me up.
That's gonna defeat the purpose of getting the questions, maybe the ninth. I think the idea was so.
Could I make a friendly amendment to that, which would be to, that we would submit them by November ninth? Which would give us another day, but then we'd give you one day to get it to the administration at the same time as the school board's questions arrive. And then they'd be kind of co-terminis. Would that work?
I'll take any additional days I can.
Okay, um. Yeah, I can work with the ninth.
Somebody, do we have to make a motion or just agree on that?
Just. Just agree on it.
I agree.
Alright, so we're going to the ninth. Did you hear that?
Yep, I did, sorry, yeah.
Alright, so ninth.
Just give you a little pressure. I, I had a question. And that is on the eighteenth, are you envisioning that as a one-sided thing or will there be an opportunity for Q and A? Or how, how, how is that going to proceed?
It will be the same as it's been for five years, we will present, you guys will share your questions, we'll share answers. And then if we need to discuss at the follow-up meeting when you have, so the, the board will have, will have that meeting that night. And then the board will deliberate and send you a budget. At meeting and have any discussion that you need to have. The second meeting.
Can I, um, can I ask a question? Um, are you guys going to share the answers before the meeting? Um, I know last year it was difficult because some things I thought were answered, but they weren't and it was just. I understand that, you know, you like the format, the way that it is, but it's just difficult if you don't have the information ahead of time.
We, we will try, but honestly, if we get another hundred and thirty-five questions like we have the last three years, we are going to barely make it. By the meeting of the, on the Thursday.
Yeah.
We only have four school days to answer all those questions, so I can't promise.
Okay, it's just difficult as you're going through to make the appropriate notes. I found that was what I struggled with the most last year, was trying to make the notes as you were going through them, like I couldn't keep up, you know what I mean? So if I had them ahead of time, I could make the notes and then hopefully you would answer them, but if you didn't, I would still have the follow-up questions.
Yeah, and we certainly are, are happy to, to, uh, um, do whatever we can to, look, the goal of the question and answer is to give you the information.
Yeah.
We, we want you to get the information, the problem is sometimes there's so many questions that it takes almost two hours to answer them all. So I really want to strongly suggest to everyone in this room that you review the questions that have already been asked. Because the things that have been changed in this budget were in slide, whatever the slide was for. There aren't a lot of dramatic changes to this budget because we've been working really hard to align our budget appropriately for our needs and we haven't had a big swing in the number of students one way or the other, there aren't a lot of, pretty much it's contractual increases. And money for, uh, um, inflation for fuel, oil, electricity and some needs for special ed. That's pretty much what's in the budget, I didn't, we didn't add any programs or we added, um, the reading curriculum program in the math program based on school board goals, but we're really not asking for anything significant in the budget, so if you, if you focus on, um, the, you have to remember that year-to-year comparisons for expenditures are all over the place right now. If everyone asks us fifty questions about, well, you spent three dollars in this account four years ago or two years ago and you spent half of it last year, do you need it next year? The answer is, we don't know. We don't know, we haven't had a full year of normal school until this year, it's been three years. So we're trying, you know, that's just my answer to those questions is we're still, we're going back to baseline this year, we'll know a lot more next year what baseline is. Because this is the first full year of school that we've had, so it really depends Vanessa on the volume of the questions and, and the repetitiveness, I don't know at this point, but certainly if we can, we will try.
Okay, I mean, even if it's a live Google document, sorry, Annie, in, you know, at least maybe we can review some of them before the meeting and maybe the half of them, you know. Anything would be helpful for me at least, I don't know how others feel.
I, I wanted to suggest that, you know, in the past few years, there've been a number of questions that are all, as you said, very much, very similar. I'd like to suggest that you group those.
We'll try.
And just say, we don't know. And just, and just do it that way, instead of taking the time to go
One by one.
Through fifty different questions that basically are all the same answer.
Yeah, no, we, we do try, it, it, it's hard because they, I'll, we will do our best to be as efficient as possible as you saw tonight. I think I did that in six minutes instead of an hour, so I'm trying to be more efficient.
Can I just make a comment to what Annie is suggesting? Uh, and I think I've learned, uh, over the last couple of years and when Annie talks about the grouping of the questions. I think a lot of them in, in like, these are questions that have kind of come from me, they're the same answer. Why did health insurance go up here? Why did FICA go up here? I don't know that you need to have twelve different questions that have the same answer.
Sure.
So my question or suggestion might be, if you can just group those together, I mean, I, I personally would be okay with that, I don't know. Other people feel about that, but I don't feel like you need to go digging and answer each, if it's this, you know what I mean? It's like literally the same answer.
Thank you.
And I know that for myself, just having learned, I didn't realize that maybe the first time around. And now I realize it's the same thing, we're just asking more work from you guys. We all have to sit and listen to the same answer, so.
And, and I will say, just to be clear, like, we, we've all gotten to know each other and compared to year one. The depth of some questions is way better than it used to be. Right? Like that, we're, we're getting into the work now, we're, we're trying to help kids with their learning where that we've done the cost efficiency work that we promised that we would do. And we continue to look at cost efficiencies, but we also have needs. That list of things that are important but aren't in the critical, that's a serious list of items. Right? I, I will say it again and I'm, I'm saying it because I don't want anyone to come to me in three years and say, Tom, you didn't tell us that the Baki school is struggling with X, the boiler. We had to buy a boiler last spring, it died, we kept limping it along, we thought we could make it work for one more year and it just died. There was no choice. I don't want to do that a lot. I know that the track has troubles. And so I have to tell you because I care. And it's my responsibility to make you aware as a community so that you can make proactive decisions, not reactive decisions. And so that's why you'll see more of a capital component now because we did the reorganization and had the savings. And, and we will be working really hard on the academics part, but our capital costs are a big part of the, when the strategic plan comes out over the next two months. There's the academic component, but there's also technology plan. A, a capital plan for the district. And a lot of things to discuss about what's going to go in or not by the school board in the community. And so I just want to open the doors wide to talk about it. Because we can't move forward if we don't all know the information. And agree or disagree, at least we all know the same information, so thank you. And I would like to stop now because I don't want to get into Q and A already. Thank you. Amy has his hand up.
Quick two points, one is if we get questions in earlier, you'll take questions earlier, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, the sooner the better.
Make sure that we, we can get that done, the other is I just want to, uh, caution, count, uh, counsel caution. You can't have all answers and say that we don't know, so we do know a lot of things and it can't just be a bunch of I don't knows when the, when the questions come in.
Right.
Did we adjourn?
No, we hadn't, not yet.
We'll let Mary have it.
Alright. Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. I did my part, I'm good.
Alright.
We won on that team.
Yeah, when you get to leave. Uh-huh, sorry.
So you're gonna be there for the second public comment? Alright.
Does anybody need? Okay, alright. Alright, just making sure. Alright, so, um.
Great, thank you, um. So I've been talking about the academic intervention. This fall off and on, but I wanted to give you a, we, we have, I wanted to give you a, a clear and concise update. So when we reorganized the district, we agreed to fund nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars in academic intervention. We gave back about, we had planned to give back almost four hundred and twenty thousand to the community to offset taxes. The reorganization saved us a lot more than that. We had budgeted for building a locker room and Mr. Stack found a creative alternative to that. Matt worked really hard and got the budget to come in lower for the moves and the capital improvements. And things have gone exceptionally well with that process. In addition to that, there are a lot of efficiencies around custodians, teaching staff, administration and, 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 um, uh, um, clerical staff. So having said that, it has been incredibly difficult with the pandemic to figure out what to do with intervention and obviously a lot of the positions last year literally just covered classrooms. Because we didn't have enough people to teach between the FF-CRA, the Family First Leave Act. And, um, the, uh, uh, FMLA, Family Medical Leave Act, we barely opened school last fall. So a lot of those positions went to covering last year, this year. We have fully funded and have up and running relatively strong, but still occasionally covering classrooms. Due to substitute loss, the pandemic is still very real for us. But we do have a teacher at Baki for math and reading, two different teachers, one for each. One at Memorial for math and reading to do remediation and one at the middle school for math and reading. Having said that, there are ten paraprofessional positions that are open and not filled. Five at Baki, four at Baki. Three at Memorial. And three at, uh, um, the middle school. So the administrative team has put together a proposal. We gave it until October thirty-first to try to fill those positions with paras. No one has applied. We have now lowered the expectation from an associate's degree to a, any, anyone who is willing to apply with a high school diploma. We are recommending to the board that we have a conversation about combining the para positions to hire a teacher. Because the COVID learning loss is significant and we'd like to hire, we have four para positions at Baki. We would like to hire two teachers. We have two para position, three para positions at Memorial. We would like to hire one teacher and use some of the ESSER money to pay for the other half of the teacher for the next two years, because we have the money from the grants to do that. And we would like to do the same thing at the middle school. Hire, um, take two paras and hire a teacher. And, and take the other one para and the other half of the money that we need from the ESSER grant to pay for the position so that the students are receiving academic remediation at a much higher level immediately. So I, I don't know if I'm actually asking for, I mean, I'd like a motion and, and a, and a move to support this. But an understanding that we recognize that, that as we rec, we work with our paras to bring a new contract that our ability to hire paras may get better next year. So what does that mean? It means that if we have some of these intervention teachers and they're doing really, really well and we have other openings in the district, we may transfer them to those openings and then hire paras again. We, we, we need to look at this as a dynamic situation, not a black and white, just this is the answer. But I don't want to go another 10 months without any intervention for the kids. So I think that, that there was one, I just want to make sure. We have more to talk to you about with the ESER money. We aren't, we're being very conservative with it and we are being very, very careful not to create programs that there will be an expectation to maintain when the grant money goes away. So it's our expectation that if we use some ESER money to pay for a halftime position at Memorial and a halftime position at the middle school, that those positions will go away when the ESER money goes away, which is in two years.
Including the teaching position.
That's what I'm saying. The one, they'd have to be two-year positions or one-year positions, but remember all, all first year positions are one-year positions. You don't, you don't have a continuing contract until three years.
We're not creating new positions.
Yeah, we're not.
But temporarily.
Exactly, exactly. The ESER grant money will go away and those positions will have to go with them.
But hopefully, those people that we hire, there may be openings over the next two years.
We have openings every year. We're not really worried about it. Yeah, and we did have that conversation. No, they are not permanent positions.
Yes.
So yeah. For the parent, whether it's paras or teachers. Do you have the program to put them into?
Well, the program at this point is literally remediate. I mean, are you asking me, did we adopt a rote canned program? No. That's not what's best for kids. What we
What are you going to do with them?
Yeah, that's exactly the, the work that Christine and Patty are doing is they are looking at all of the NWA data from all the kids that took the test this fall and all the assessment data, and they're already placing kids in groups. And there are a lot of kids who need support. As to be expected, right? I mean, the whole world is technically going to be behind for this whole generation. From where they would have been if the pandemic didn't happen.
So I'm, am I correct in saying that you know what needs to be done? You're ready to do it.
Yep.
But you don't have the personnel.
That is perfect. That's exactly what's going on. We just felt like we had to give it the good old boy try and let it go till October 31st. We set an internal deadline.
Okay, I think actually you need a motion before we discuss, so make the motion.
Thank you, Peter.
You don't, you don't, you can do it either.
Okay.
While we are kind of doing it backwards, you know, but that's all right.
Did you make that motion?
That's kind of how we do it. Make a motion to. Yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Discussion.
So just for clarity, the motion is to proceed with hiring teachers for the combined paras as recommended by the administration.
To be even clearer, using already budgeted funds and some grant money at Memorial and the middle school.
So my, my perspective on that would be, and Tom, you alluded to that, I've stated it rightly. Kids are already behind from March of 2020. We've got an intervention program and we're not executing it for ver, for a myriad of reasons.
Not because we don't want to.
Right, so we need to do what we need to do to get off that stick and, and get the intervention going. I mean, if they've ever needed it, the, the intention of intervention was pre-pandemic. We needed it before the pandemic. Now we're into the pandemic, we've lost that, that education, that, that learning. They're, they're behind and we want to get them not only up to speed, but progressing further than they were progressing before. I don't think you can wait any longer. I think you have to move.
Thank you. We do too, Jamie.
All right, all in favor?
All right, thank you very much, everyone. I will say before we move on that this is phase one of a two-part process. We need to come and talk to you about, we received survey results for the ESER grants. And academic and social and emotional help is very high on the list. We're preparing a proposal, but we wanted to get this done first because we can only hire so many people at once. And as Jim alluded to, we need to successfully onboard them and get them going with the program. So we're, we're even with today's vote, we're probably five, four or five weeks away from posting, hiring, getting them here and out of there, wherever they were, or what they were doing, you know, getting them onboard. So thanks for not stalling on that, right? It's important. But we will be bringing to you more plans for the ESER grants because I see kids who need help and I want to help them right now. So it, it will be quick. We'll probably, the next meeting or the first meeting in December bring you more information. Okay? Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't, you guys were still sitting up here. I just.
We could hear.
Thanks, thanks.
All right, we will move on to policies for a second brief.
You may move this whole group at once.
Just going to say, have we, I was going to ask a question. Have we all read them? Everybody's
It's the second read.
No, I was just going to say make a motion as, as presented versus having to read them all again, you know. I don't know how you want to handle it, Madam Chairman.
No one's opposed to moving them together. I'd say we move them together. Is that okay with everyone?
It's fine. I still have some questions.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve that. We read them, we approve them all together.
Okay, great. All right, discussion.
I think somebody did, didn't they?
I think Jamie.
Yeah, on DAF, that's the one with the discussion on grant money and how it's going to be spent, et cetera. And I've still got concerns that if you, according to the policy, you could spend a quarter of a million dollars and not get bids. And we should never, ever spend that kind of money without getting bids.
So you want to modify it?
Yeah, I, I, I understand that it's, that's we're incorporating, well, those are the rules of the grants or what have you. But if the grants want to be that lax with money, doesn't mean that we ought to do that. It's just, it's rife for potential conflicts. It's, it's I think our own internal policies for comparison isn't 250,000, it's like $2,500. It's one one hundreds of that. And it's just, I, I think that we should amend that and, and bring that to a realistic number that we, we really do want to get bids and make sure that it's transparent. It's not just moving because you can.
Yeah, there's, there's apology, policy DJE that specifies what, when we can, we have to have bids. If it's over 20. And we should have them if it's under, unless there's some, you know.
Extenuating services, sure, sure. Matt, are you okay with that?
Absolutely. Reducing it. Guideline, so. But you have to, you have to reduce it in like three different areas. The micro purchases, the small purchases and the sealed bids. So right now the micro purchases is at 10,000, small purchases is at 250,000 and sealed bids is at 250,000.
So it's below 250 for small purchases and sealed bid above 250?
Is that a state regulation that you're reading?
No, no, this is a federal regulation.
Okay, because our policy is stricter than that.
Right, right, but remember you, I just want to make sure we're clear that our policy might be for local funds that are locally raised. If this is for grant funds, sometimes there are different rules and I just don't want there to be a, a con, I just don't want to, I want to tease out what Matt's saying. And if we need to table that one and look at it a little bit more and then come back again, that's perfectly fine.
Yeah, and I, I don't think there's, you know, Matt would know better than I. It would be my belief that the feds don't say, you're not allowed to go out for bid. It's, you must if you're over these numbers and we're not going to require any documentation doing that under these.
Right, locally we could be strict, just not less strict.
That's all, I mean, in my mind, we should defer to our own, our own internals as to what we would do because we shouldn't be spending that money any different than we spend our own money in terms of the prudence of the dollar.
Yep.
Yeah, it, it, I think Matt, if I'm right, that's, that's reporting to them versus how we actually handle it. In other words, we don't have to report to them anything under 250. I'm using the wrong word perhaps. But we have, in other words, we have to be, Jamie's suggestion, we'd be more careful. But the federal government's saying, well, you don't, you know, we, you don't have to report.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're not worried about purchases under 250,000.
Right, right.
Okay.
We don't have to, and I'm using the word report perhaps is the wrong word. But they're gonna, in a sense, trust us more up to 250 than we are.
And maybe we just, maybe we just amend it to, to have a, a statement that says, you know, those reporting things are fine. But in our spending of the money, we will follow our local, our, our local policies.
Yeah.
I've got the paragraph.
I'm, I'll defer to Matt.
Um, it's very important that we don't follow our local policy when dealing with federal funds. Cause there's some, there's some items in that policy that violates federal, federal law.
So, so what are you suggesting, Matt? They just want to set limits on the
I would suggest that you reduce the amount of the purchases, say from 250,000 to 20,000.
Well, that's what the policy said.
Yeah.
I think you're saying we can't take that paragraph from the policy and put it into here, but we can just take and reduce the 250,000s down to 20 in this policy.
Yeah, he's just saying, just knock the numbers down.
Right.
No, that's fine. I just I got a problem with, with getting up to spending and being able to dole out a quarter of a million here and there and not having any accountability.
Yeah, and, and typically we do get bids anyway.
I know.
Because it's best. We want to save every dollar we can, so.
But I don't want to have it in policy for future boards.
I agree. Yep, thanks, Jamie.
All right, um, so we need to amend our original motion.
So can we, a friendly amendment to adjust the bid requirement down to $20,000 for this?
I'm going to make a suggestion.
Okay.
That we give the wording to Matt. And then he can verify whether it's okay and then come back at us when we make the final decision. I just want to make sure we don't do something now, tonight, it's going to muck us up. But if you could take that paragraph and give it to Matt.
Matt said we can't take the paragraph. We can only just change those numbers from 250,000.
So let me try another.
Can't, can't, I mean, you, you, you're sure on that?
Yeah, you can be tighter on your regulate. Oh yeah, no, I see what you're saying. But, but I, I think being more prudent in your policy will be favorably looked upon by the state and the federal government.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, all right. You see where I'm coming from.
I do.
So if you look at DG, DJE and you see that paragraph that talks about the $20,000. You can word that however you feel needs to be.
We can mirror the, the amounts.
So let me, let me try a different friendly amendment. Why don't we take DAF out of this grouping? And then Matt can work on the sense of what we've just discussed and come back with an adjustment there.
That's, that's what I'm
That's easy.
Yeah, you, you see, you see my concern. We're going to say something tonight and not be able to do it or.
So then can you amend your?
I'm not, I didn't make any motion. I'm just suggesting.
You made an original.
Put them all together. Okay, so remove DAF Pete.
Yeah, just remove the.
Yeah, that's fine. I have no problem.
Move all of them except DAF.
All right, and who, Phyllis, who seconded that originally?
Policy Chair.
Okay, so can you amend your second?
No, it was me. It was Heather. You looked at me and I was laughing because Heather always seconds it, so. Saw me, you thought it was me, but I was laughing.
We're usually more organized folks. We really are.
All right.
I will amend to remove DAF.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, great, thank you. Great, Newton Resource Office.
I'm very happy to say that we finally after a long time and a lot of back and forth, right down to the wire last night at the Newton Selectmen's meeting. We have an agreement with Newton to utilize the funds that have been made available to us by renting the middle school to the SLC. So I'll try to explain this in simple terms. We all know that I'm really good at being concise, so I will exercise that right now. I'm looking at Maura. She's like all right, so here's the deal. The SLC, the position, if it's 100%, the town of Newton will pay 20%. The SLC pays 40% and we pay 40% because what we really needed was a school year position, which is not a full year position. But Newton said if we're going to hire someone for the school year, we might as well kick in the extra 20% to have it year round. And we said, fine, that's up to you. We don't, we just need it during the school year. So per the contract that we signed with the Seacoast Learning Collaborative, we, we weren't able to capitalize. We lost their 40% last year because we, we couldn't get that worked out and get it going with COVID and everything. And honestly, it was just too much. So we got it. We're all set. It's been, the, the agreements in here. Matt has gone back and forth with lawyers, Primex, the town of Newton, literally for a year and a half. But it, there have been periods of months where we didn't work on it at all. But all joking aside, it has taken, thank you, Matt. It's been a lot of work to get this to where it is. And it, it finally, um, came to a head when I called Charlie and said, hey, Charlie, I just want you to know that we're gonna, we're going to hire a, 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 a security officer or something because we've got to do something. We can't go anymore. And Charlie said, we don't want that. It's a chance at having an officer in the community for available for 20%. And I said, okay, let's get this done. And sure enough, Charlie went to bat and got it done for us. So thank you.
You need to recognize Ryan's efforts in this as well.
Yeah, Ryan McCluskey has done a fantastic job. Chief, Chief Jewitt worked hard on it in the Newton Selectmen. Once they understood and were clear, really moved very quickly. So it was great.
So the funds will be paid to the police and then they do the payroll and all that?
They take care of everything. It's their police officer. We just, we, we negotiated all the terms of like the percentages and everything, so it was all clean. I don't even, do you need the board to vote on this? Or I think it's just more of a notice, right?
It would be better if they did.
Okay, great. So we're looking for a motion to move forward.
Move to approve?
Thank you.
Get that, Phyllis.
Give it to Maura, Phyllis.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chief Jewitt says thank you too. He's really excited.
All right, second public comment.
Hello, Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. The discussion tonight about using the funds for interventionists. Last week at the Budget Committee, we talked with Mr. Angel about the concern for making sure we're not using money from federal grants to supplant, I think that was the word he used. Money that was or positions, funds, plans that were in our, our own budget using federal funds for that. So I'm just want to make sure that this plan is passing that muster and we don't get kind of caught in that using the funds improperly.
Annie Collier Newton, I attended the Board of Selectmen meeting last night in Newton because I'm involved with them in the master plan. And listened to the budget. Their proposed budget is going to probably, it sounds like go up about 10% higher than the default budget. And so I think the board needs to be aware of that in your planning for this resource officer. That, you know, it may or may not be available.
You mean their 20% may not be available?
It could, it could happen.
Right.
I'm just cautioning. I don't, I don't know. Obviously the numbers are not final. But they have a lot of, just like we do with our paras. Where they're getting $13 an hour. They have a lot of people on road crew and things like that where they're going to be hiring people for higher amounts. And they don't have a contract to pass.
Right.
So it's not, it's not something that the voters can vote separately. It just is going into the budget. So as, as is their, ours, as are their utility costs. So I just wanted to put a caution out there about that. The other thing is that as the board is looking at the ESER money, I hope that you will, because of the social emotional needs of the kids and fam, their families due to COVID. I think that the 30% depression rate is probably a lot higher. than what it was tested out to be several years ago. I see Heather nodding. It's something that I raised at the Selectmen's meeting in, in Newton as, um, a concern of how we can, and they are looking at doing that community-wide with ESER money. I hope that because the needs are so intense right now, without creating a permanent ongoing forever position, that for the next couple of years, we really look at possibly adding with ESER money, um, SAC um, type of resource for the families in the community.
All right, anyone else? All right. Move on. Uh, the next Sandborne Regional School Board meeting will be a joint meeting with the Budget Committee, held on Thursday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven PM in the library at the Sandborne Regional High School. Um, and we will now, Mr. Broderick, if you will, uh, bring us into non-public.
Make, make a motion. We go into non-public, according to RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, two, C, and K. And might.
Roll call votes, roll call votes, so Pete?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Maura? Tammy?
Yes.
Jim?
And myself?
Yes.